Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Village Board meeting for April. Glad to see such a nice turnout. I'd like to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to get right into our budget session. So tonight we have scheduled a public hearing and public comment session on our 2019-2020 budget. I'd just like to thank the Board and our Treasurer Karen McLaughlin for everything that they have done over the past months of meeting regularly and weekly to get this budget to a place where we can now present it to the public and go forward. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing and open the public comment section.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. So first, we'll go into an overview of the budget, which I think is appropriate before we go into talking about specifics or any comments. So with that, Karen, I would like you to give us an overview.
Okay. Thank you. This year, the budget process began early in January with individual department meetings. The trustee liaison and department heads met, reviewed the current budget versus the actual, what they proposed to purchase or to do in the next year, and then prepared their requests. After this, budget workshops to present to the Board each department's request took place on January 29th, February 5th, 19th, and 26th. On March 26th, the Mayor and the Village Board reviewed the entire budget, including the water and sewer funds. The village's assessed valuation has increased by 1.32 million over last year. Salaries have been calculated with a 2% increase as per the current union contract, and a list of major changes has been presented with the tentative budget. And I'll just review a few of them. In the general fund, in the revenue, we had an increase to Dutchess County sales tax of $40,000. We have an anticipated revenue for interest earned from short-term liquid investments of $15,000. We, New York State eliminated the state aid, which for the village was $14,328. Then they reinstated it, and now the New York State aid will be distributed via the Dutchess County sales tax. So we will be getting it, however, we'll just be getting it through the Dutchess County sales tax. We assigned fund balance for a five-year lease purchase for a leafback truck that we purchased during this current year. On the expense side, increase to the data processing, we will be purchasing a server and a Windows upgrade for $12,890. And the fire department, we had a mandatory mandated volunteer firefighter cancer policy, so we increased that by $4,000. In the highway, we increased the paving line item by $10,000. In the planning and zoning, we contracted a minutes clerk for $3,500. We created an on-call part-time employee position able to work in any department, and we started that increase by $6,000, which corresponds with an elimination of a summer hire position for the same $6,000. We created an auditor account for a court audit for $2,200, and we increased the budget for the police line item for Dutchess County Sheriff's Services for events that are not reimbursed by $4,000. On the decrease side, as I said, we eliminated that summer hire position. We decreased the engineering by $5,000. The medical insurance, we were able to decrease that by $10,000. And the transfer to capital for fire, parks, and rec, and sidewalk have been slightly decreased because at this time, we don't have any plan for any particular projects in those three areas. So the proposed budget reflects an increase in the tax levy of only $1,044 and a decrease in the tax rate from $4.17 to $4.16 per thousand of assessed value. The water budget is proposed at $965,849, and the sewer budget is proposed at $813,415, and neither will require a raise in rates at this time. That's the big overview.
So we're in the public comment session. Does anybody like to have a comment on our 2019-2020 budget?
I have a question.
We're in the comment section, Donna. Yes, please do.
Do I have to get up?
Yes. You're on hand, Donna.
This was not it. I've always wondered, it's just a clarification on the budget as to who finances the security, police, sheriff, and all of that for the big event, which would be Center Class and other events like that. Is that paid from our budget? Or is it paid entirely by those event sponsors?
None of the events are charged because we cannot charge for police protection. So that's something we're not allowed to do as a village entity, to charge for that. We have in the past received donations, and we did receive a donation this year for some of the events. So that's up to the event holder or the event people who are doing it if they so wish to give the village a donation, but we do not charge and by state law cannot charge.
Okay. Question asked, question answered. So just to clarify, so taxpayers of the village of Rhinebeck are financing the security?
For all of the events. For all events.
Is this a public hearing just for the budget?
This is just for, this is a public hearing just for our budget, the 2019-2020 budget. Okay? Yes. Any other comments on our budget? Having, oh, yes, sir.
I'm Paul McLaughlin. Just, I was curious, you mentioned $1.3 million increased.
In assessed valuation.
Assessed valuation. What percent increase is that? Do you have any idea?
It's one question. Our assessed valuation is $399,900.
Okay, sorry.
Less than 1%?
It's allocated by, Dutchess County allocates or they establish the villages, the entire village's assessed valuation.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Twenty ones? Hearing no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment session for the 2019-2020 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Now we're into the public hearing process for the budget. So at this point, is there any comments from the Board in terms of regard to our budget?
I'm just curious, Karen, how did the return of state aid, about $13,000, that got placed there?
Well, we're waiting to make sure that we know exactly what that amount is. When that comes in, we're going to apply that to contingency and increase that revenue account.
Okay. So basically, we decided we would work without it.
Correct.
Comes through, then, okay.
No, it's not in this question.
It's not, really, okay.
Right. I mean, just to be conservative and to just not plan for it and then not know if they're going to change it.
Right.
But, I mean, so when we get it and the amount that we get, we'll put that in contingency, and then the Board can authorize that to be used where they see fit.
Right. So until all money delivers, we don't, we're not going to count our, count our money. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on the budget? All right. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the 2019-20 budget as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
You want to do the water and sewer budgets separately?
Yes. Yeah, as part of your Treasury report, you mean?
No, to approve.
Oh, yes. Good point.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the water budget as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to have the wastewater sewer budget approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded that?
Oh. Abstained? So carried. Very good. Just for clarification, does everybody realize that the water and the wastewater departments are a separate, separate from our general fund budget and are not part of the tax levy, which we have set at $4.16, which is a decrease from last year, $4.17 for the budget? So, thank you, Board.
$4,000 of assessed value.
$4,000. Every penny counts. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
For your work. Yes. Budget passed. Where's my gavel? I don't like to use a gavel. Passed. All right. Next, we're going to the public comment session. This is for general comment. So anybody who has signed in to make a comment, please, we'll get your list, we'll call your name, come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and we'll have a comment section. Good evening, Alice.
Good evening. I'm Alice Klotnick. I hope you could all hear me. I'd just like to talk about the Rhinebeck sidewalks. Three years ago, I fell and broke my wrist at 6469 Montgomery Street. No, it's 6467 Montgomery Street, 6467. I broke two bones in my wrist, and that took a lot of physical therapy, a lot of expense. I didn't sue the village because I love living here. I've lived here for 35 years with my husband. We live in Kramer Road, and Rhinebeck is just a wonderful place to live, and I love the people that live here as well. But three years later, unfortunately, again, I fell at the same place. I was walking home at a pretty good speed, and just out of the blue, my shoe hit, and I went flying. I put my hands out because I was aiming toward my face, and I jammed my left wrist and really scuffed up my knee. I was lucky, there was a passerby, a lady that I knew from my days of dog walking, who rescued me. She gave me a ride to Tops, she got me antibiotic ointment, and took me to Estor Square to get my eyeglasses fixed. Thankfully, my lenses were fine, but my glasses were totally out of whack, and without them, I am blind. So then she took me home, and, you know, I recovered. But I'm here to speak for other walkers, other people, visitors to Rhinebeck, New York City people who come up on the weekend, local people who live here. I'm just looking out for them and hope that maybe the village can do something about these sidewalks. If it's the homeowner's responsibility, tell them what to do. Maybe it's just a matter of taking an orange can of paint and brushing over those areas, or maybe simply getting the sidewalks repaired. But thank you for listening. Have a nice evening.
Alice, thank you for your comment. And Alice, I would like to comment on this because for the last year and a half, we have been conducting a sidewalk campaign within the village, and we have gone out. Our Superintendent of Public Works and Zoning Enforcement Officer, John Fenton, has literally walked the village and done exactly what you described, painted with orange mark and flag, and we logged, we have a log of sidewalk issues, and we've been in contact and working with a lot of our homeowners to replace and repair their sidewalks because we do take it seriously. Because one of the things we love, as you do about the village of Rhinebeck, is that it's a walkable, bikeable, sustainable village. And we do really want to make sure that our sidewalks are improved, and we're working diligently on doing that. And if you notice, when you leave our village hall, you'll see an orange mark right in front of our front door because we also have to repair our sidewalks. And we painted it and flagged it as part, just like we're doing for the rest of the village.
Very good. Don't forget 6467.
I do think that John has been working in sections throughout the village, is that correct?
Yeah, we've covered everything of all, and I don't know if he's finished all of the business section yet in terms of that flagging, but they all know.
Okay. Thanks very much.
But thank you for your support and reminder to keep us at doing that.
Yes. I'm sorry that they were injured so badly a while ago, and it's really important to me and the rest of the Board that actually do have safe and functional sidewalks, and it's something that we've been really trying to get to. It's slower than we'd like all the time, but it is definitely something that makes Rhinebeck a wonderful place and would want to see them in good repair.
Well, thank you. You're on the right track.
Next, Donna Warner. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Donna Warner at 23 Beach Street. Last month, the Board made a decision to not read correspondence from the public. I believe that was a, I don't know, I haven't seen, I wasn't here. But this month, the list of correspondence with senders' names has also been eliminated. There's just a mention of correspondence. In the interest of providing more and not less information to residents, I would ask that the Board possibly reconsider this or consider alternatives so that we may know what's on the minds of our fellow residents. Asking the public to come into the clerk's office monthly, I believe that's the procedure now. If I wanted to know what's on the minds of residents, I would have to come in and ask for copies of letters. The problem is that, that without even knowing what the topics are, this could be, you know, sort of, this could be a useless trip. So I ask that you consider, for example, what other communities might do. One community I know lists the topic of each communication. You could list the sender and the topic or have some idea before one makes the trip into the village. Another alternative might be to post the letters on the website. The best, I think, is to read the letters, as has been the custom, so that they are on hand, and all residents can hear what's on the minds of residents. So last month, for example, three letters were submitted that pertain to residents' concerns with Airbnb. And so without reading the letters or in some way disclosing something about them in the meeting, this goes unnoticed by the general public. So I'm not going, I'm going to spare you. I was going to read a couple of samples of what neighbors are saying about Airbnb. Maybe I will. Do I have a minute or no minute? No? Okay, I'll tell you. I will read a couple of examples, just sort of as an example of what the public or residents may be missing. Here is what some neighbors are saying. A tour bus came down our street and unloaded a wedding party of 15 people at the Airbnb next door. At 12:30 a.m., I had, these are different people, this comment, "At 12:30 a.m., I had to roust the owners who live 15 miles away to come and quiet the party at the Airbnb next door. I found a strange man on my front steps rifling through my mailbox. He was an Airbnb renter at the wrong address looking for a key. The Airbnb guests next door were firing up the grill. I smelled kerosene and saw the flames licking the branches of a large pine tree near my house. With strangers coming and going at the Airbnb next door, it no longer feels safe to let our young children play outside, and we now lock our doors during the day. A family with children in our schools was given notice to vacate their rental home so the owner could make it in the Airbnb."
Donna, are these from Rhinebeck?
Oh, absolutely. They're from Rhinebeck Village, residents who have either been here and commented or who have submitted correspondence. The one I didn't read was, "The Airbnb next door has inadequate parking, so the guests park on the grass-strewn sidewalk in front of my house." So some of these have been submitted, or they have commented, or we have, for those of us who have been concerned about this issue, have heard it from our neighbors. So they're real, and they're village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think that we could add the correspondence on the web?
So what we voted on several, several months ago, we talked about this in the manner of kind of helping to reduce the flow and the time involved for everybody to stay and listen to what tonight, as we do publish the list of all of the correspondence on our agenda, which is publicly available, and so that goes out with the agenda. And so we can, if you would like, read the list for that's everybody's available to, rather than saying the correspondence is on file, we can read the list, and then people can pick and choose to come in and see what they want.
We could also post the letters on the website.
Probably could. I don't know why not.
Folder for the public. I thought we were doing, not this month, I know.
No, we haven't.
We don't post them on the website. We post them on the cloud. None of the correspondence is on the website?
Well, that's right, no.
We have.
We post them on the cloud.
For us to have. You have. All of us have access to it.
With that, public link, you could do that also.
Have we, why not, have we thought of some sort of, what, a public comment field or contact field where you could write something directly onto the computer, therefore making it a little bit easier, and so basically you'd have this input and then just post those?
I think we have some regulations against that, so they have to come in and be received and noted and documented, so that's come in, so we have correspondence that way. Otherwise, you'll get into an answering session, so.
I get it, yeah. I mean, it would seem to be an efficient way to have a, you know, contact the Mayor, communicate with the Mayor, and basically fill out a basic form that identifies yourself, and you write some comments.
They could always email letters, which they do, which is included as part of correspondence.
Right.
So that is part of it.
I think, hey, I'm keeping it itemized list with the topic, like Donna had said, I think that would be, as a public, because that has not, it just says all correspondence because I think there's usually about 10 or 15, you know, so it's like a two-page agenda, but I can, I can keep it on there and have it with the topic.
Could we not scan the letters as a PDF?
They are. They're scanned and they're on the cloud.
Or else?
For you.
But not for them?
Right.
But if they ask for it, that's a foilable thing, so they would have to.
Right, but there's no reason to not.
No, they're scanned anyways.
Because we used to read them out loud.
Right, right.
So why don't we just put them on? That's what.
Put them on where?
Public.
Put them on the public site.
On the public site.
On the website?
Yeah. In our, in the folder for our, for our public.
It says public.
On any agenda.
They're there now.
They're there now. But can the public get to them? I only got three items.
I couldn't get them today.
I will get them all on.
Okay, there you go, yes, they're all there.
There's three bunches.
Yeah. So I think, Donna, the issue's been that, right now, we have correspondence A through L, so we have a dozen letters, and it's kind of impractical to read them all, but they are available, and I think that's really, really key to doing this because it's a lot of words, and it's a lot of time to just simply read all these in the record. They are available, the topics are available, but in interest of our sanity up here, it takes a long time to read what would be, you know, 15, 20 pages worth of correspondence. So they're available, topics are available, but I think reading them has become impracticable at this point.
I think getting the link out more so that the public gets the link, so that you can go from the link right to it.
You can go right to it?
Yeah.
That's great. I think the question is, how do we do it other than coming in?
It would be through the link.
So a link, if the link is available to the public.
The link is there with all of our documentation for the meeting. We've been doing that for about two years now.
Can Dick just create a link on the public site that links, just as we link to Ecode and we link to other services, do we not have a link that brings the public to?
I'll ask him if he can do that. Because it does change with the documents, so I would, I'll check what the web asks or and see if there's a direct link that can go onto the website that'll directly take, that's fine, because I would be readily available to you.
Okay, all right. Moving on. I'm sorry, I cannot read the third person's name on the list. Looks like it's from Platt Avenue.
Reagan Polite.
Oh, hey, Reagan. Sorry, I could not read it.
That's okay. I got terrible writing. Should've been a lawyer. Or a doctor. Name is Reagan Polite. I'm a member of the Rhinebeck Lions Club. I've been a member for over 30 years on it. I'm here to speak about the coin drops, which we've been doing for over 30 years. That money that we get stays in the village of Rhinebeck. It helps for many, many programs that we have, including the mini park. We give out over 100 dinners on Thanksgiving, where all this money is needed to help us continue with our giving and helping the village of Rhinebeck. The money comes from people who come in to go to the fair. Now, we get nothing from fair. Rhinebeck Fair gives us zit. This is a way of getting something from the fair. There's three groups, which was the Lions Club, the American Legion, and the Fire Department, who do it. It's only three weekends out of the whole year, five hours each day, you're talking 30 hours, for the amount of money we get from these people to help pay for things in the village of Rhinebeck, help people who need help. I mean, we helped people this fair, so they didn't have oil. We pay for their oil. We help people with sight hearing, everything else. But without this money, there's a lot of this that's going to fall by the race line. We don't come to the village and ask them for any money. We do it all on our own, and it's just because of this coin drop, which is a big part of all three groups, helping to support us. I mean, it helps, the Legion does the parade, it helps the parades, has the Halloween parade. We have scholarships that the Legion and the Lions Club give out. All these will suffer. We can't find a way to increase our money. Now, we've had more people tell us that they're thankful and they're willing to put up with it for the three lousy weekends. So without this, we are going to suffer, and somebody's going to have to pick up the slack financially.
Sorry, we do have this on agenda to discuss under a special request later, so I hope you can stay.
I will stay.
To the meeting so that we can participate in that discussion.
I will stay.
Very good. I'd just like to make one correction. The volunteer fire department has not for several years inducted coin drops, so they're no longer doing it. That's the only correction.
I thought they were there last year.
No, they didn't.
Okay.
Okay, next, Paul.
Okay, I'm here to talk about sidewalks. Unless you have my sympathy, I probably have the worst specific problems in the, in the village. And in June of 2013, I sent a note to the town, basically saying, "As the owner of the property at 20 South Street, I'm bringing to your attention the treacherous condition of the sidewalk in front of my house. There are several broken, tilted, and loose stone pieces owing to the protruding roots of four maple trees which the village has planted in the two-and-a-half-foot wide space between the sidewalk and the street. Space is not appropriate for trees of this size and root type, and they should be removed before somebody has a serious accident." The tree roots, I obtained an estimate of the cost to repair or reposition the displaced blocks, but I feel this is a temporary fix at best. The tree roots will continue to grow and push the sidewalk back. I feel that the only permanent solution is to remove all four trees. trees. I propose that the village remove or pay for the removal of all four trees, and repair or pay for the repair and repositioning of the bluestone wall. A friend of mine had some trees taken down on his property in 2012, and the village, I think, did it, did the removal free of charge. And I guess, anyway, I got a response from Howard Trout on this. And he said he took it up with the tree committee, and they said those are four healthy trees. I would disagree with that assessment, but anyway, but he said the village will pay for repositioning, repairing the bluestones anywhere that the trees were the cause of the damage. These trees were planted by the town, the last one was planted in April of 1997, after the April 1th northeaster that nearly devastated all of South Street. We moved in South Street in 1999. So that's information I had from the previous owner. I did, myself, fill in the hole that was left by the tree that was knocked down. Anyway, Howard said the village would pay for at least fixing the sidewalks, and that it was going to be put out for bids or evaluation, and that's the last I heard of it, until about two years ago, I think, the first wave of assessments took place. And so I got a bunch of little flags and spray paint. And then, I guess, sometime this winter, someone actually did fall on one of them, and I received a summons, giving me 40, I think it was 45 days to repair the sidewalk. Now, I really can't, I don't quite understand how the village used to have responsibilities, and then they just said, "Well, no, not anymore." And I did, unfortunately, I did not have a documentation of the agreement that Howard Trout offered. But, you know, he did, and I would like the village to provide some assistance in remedying the situation.
Did you know when trustee Trout at the time made that commitment to you?
My best estimate is that it was in the fall, late fall of 2013. And what he said at the time was, "The weather is not conducive to doing it." But anyway, we're pursuing, evaluating how we'll do it, and that's the last I heard.
Because it was after that, the code was changed in terms of tree removal, where it went from, I think it was 50/50, to then 100% over a period of time for tree removal for the property, for the property owner.
What period of time?
So that was, yeah, it, I believe, 2015?
I do have the timestamp on the letter that I sent to the village.
Pardon?
I do have the timestamp on the letter that I sent to the village.
That would be great. Could you provide that documentation for us?
Sure.
Because I'd like to do some background work in front of this.
And Paul, I would say this. We have a problem that we need to look at. And the problem is that right now, the way the code is written, is that the homeowner is responsible for the trees and for the sidewalk. And that's the way the law is written, that's the way we inherited the law. Apparently, New York is like this. It can put a rather large burden on homeowners, and, you know, such as yourself. And sidewalks, arguably sidewalks and trees are a public good, and should be maintained by the municipality. That's not where the law is right now. But I think it is something that's worth looking at into the future, because the situation is just what you're talking about.
Yeah. I thought the village just right of way extended, I'm not sure, of the distance 50 feet from the middle of the road, which these definitely are within that.
It depends. If it's like an old side street, then it's probably the inside of the curve.
People use South Street as a pretty main...
Paul, what is your address?
20 South Street.
And, you know, it's a, Paul, one, the other thing about it, having trees on the street tends to calm traffic, too. So if people see it open, so we have a number of competing issues. The other thing about it is...
We have, from Route 9 to...
Center.
No, to, I'm sorry, to the light. And there's no stop sign. So people avoid the middle, avoid Market Street, and just go down that, go down South Street. I know there's new speed limit signs have been posted as a sidebar. I'd love to see a stop sign or two put in between there to just slow things down a little.
Well, we have a police sergeant here tonight, which could take your comment about speeding on South Street, and, and look into that as well, because I know they're very good at looking into those situations, because that's something we need to control. But that's separate from...
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So let us do some background and get with the zoning enforcement officer. And if you could provide that documentation, what you have, that would be great, if you could drop it off at the office. I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I mean, here are no other comments. We're going to move on to our department reports, and go into the treasurer's report.
Okay. The treasurer's report is for the period ending March 31st. The tax collector account ended the month with $370,737.03. The general fund ended the month with $17,527.50. The water fund ended the month with $254,610.25. And the sewer fund ended the month with $459,536.45. In the water main project account, there is $250,021.37. And our New York class investments are yielding well at 2.27%. The vouchers presented for payment this evening in the general fund total $78,428.07. In the water fund, $27,041.31. In the sewer fund, $20,206.51. We have one bill for the grant for the ADA lift for $387.75. We have a payment for the grant for the low lift pump station in the water fund for $19,147. And we have a bond for the police building interest only of $10,350. An operating statement is online and provided with the revenue expenditures through this evening. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and wastewater department in the A summons.
I'd make a motion that we approve the water adjustments as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying?
May I make a motion to accept the wastewater that is presented this evening? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying? Okay.
Okay. We have budget amendments for this evening, as we're nearing the end of the fiscal year. I'll just go over some of the major ones. One is the capital projects. One is an amount from the block grant for the Legion Park, an amount of $10,045.97. This was not covered by the grant, so this will be reallocated back to the general fund into the $7140 Parks and Rec line item. So with that, I'm going to be requesting a transfer from the $9950, transfer to Capital Parks, to cover that $10,000 value bill. We have a donation to allocate, a donation received for autism kits that came in as a donation, and we'll be putting that into the $6310 Community Action Line item. And we have a few in this, a few amendments in the sewer fund to cover the over budget for $81.30 for utilities, $81.30.13 for heating, and then $81.30.1370 for sludge hauling. And those will be from our remaining funds in the medical line item 96.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying?
And just one more item regarding the 2019-20 budget. I thank you for adopting that, and I just want to report that that will be filed in the clerk's office, and preparation of the tax bills will begin. And any unpaid water and sewer or building maintenance bills at the end of April will be reliving on taxes for next year.
Thank you, Karen.
That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, moving on from the treasurer's report, I'd like to go into the police report. I would like to, first, we had our new hire, which is listed as the third item. I would like to move that up to the front if nobody minds. And so this evening, we have Sergeant Dunn, and a new hire candidate for our police force, to be presented to the board.
Evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight to ask the board and the mayor to approve Mark Morrow's new hire. We're replacing Dylan Jost and Peter, who went full-time with the Town Woodstock Police Department. At this time, I'd like to have Mark come up. Come on, Mark. The mayor and I met with Mark, and they have both backgrounds and certifications, everything on that level. So I'd just like to have Mark come up, and if anybody had any questions, throw him at him. Hopefully, he's okay.
All right. So, Mark, can you just give everybody a brief background about yourself, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure. So my name is Mark Morrow. My name is Mark Morrow. I'm a Town of Wapers resident. I'll be 30 years old at the end of the month. I've worked in law enforcement part-time for the last six years, as a dispatcher and a police officer. And I'm looking forward to representing the residents of the village of Rhinebeck.
I had the opportunity, as Sergeant Dunn said, to meet with Mark Morrow. I really find him to be a superb person to represent our police force and to join us. So based on that, I would like to make a motion to hire Mark Morrow as a part-time police officer to the village of Rhinebeck PD.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Any questions the board would like to ask, Mark?
Welcome.
Here's your chance.
Where do you get your haircut?
I don't have good genetics, so it's all Paul House stuff.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Thank you. Welcome to the voting line.
I'm going to read the police report, yes.
First, I'm going to go into the police report. Total number of incidents in the town, this is kind of our standard report, total number of incidents in the town is 30. Total number of incidents in the village, 76. Total number of tickets into the town, 13. Total number of tickets in the village, 123. Total arrests were four, and the total number of accidents were five. This is for the month of March. I'd like to then read the court report. One second. The court report is back a month from what we, from the previous month, so this is for February. The tickets that were completed from both court sessions and mailed in for the month was 174. So revenue from the state was $5,629. Any questions on police and/or court reports? Okay. Next, I go to the fire department, please. I'll do that. One second. Give me a minute. Fire department report submitted April 9, 2019. For the month of March 2019, there were a total of 83 calls. There were 16 fire calls, 62 EMS, this is our ambulance response calls, and three motor vehicle accidents. The fire department responded with mutual aid 13 times during the month. The ambulance did not respond to 10 calls, therefore their percentage was 84.6% coverage. We had, the fire department had eight members attend a Pinsky Fire and Law Conference last weekend in March. Report, I got back from it, it was one of the best conferences they've had an opportunity to attend in a long time, in terms of bringing them up to date on a lot of issues regarding our village volunteer fire department. Now, they also submitted for a grant to Frost Foundation, seeking for new portable jaws. We're hoping that that grant gets approved. It's slightly less than $30,000 to buy jaws of life for our fire department. We're hoping that the Frost, the Frost Foundation will be able to award us that grant. Any questions on the fire department report?
Let's point out that, right now, we're only better than, that's better than two a day. Right now, almost three.
There was four today.
Four today, okay, so...
Yeah. So it's a lot of calls. Building, planning, and zoning. Trustee Korchak?
Yes. So I'd like to report on the March monthly fees for 2019. The building department received $750 for certificate of occupancy and municipal searches, and building department still has $775. The planning board collected fees totaling $325 for fees and approvals. The total for the month was $1,850. I'd also like to share with the group that we had asked from the TCA, our professional computer associate service provider, for an estimate for a computer that would be dedicated for note-taking and supporting the planning and zoning board activities. We received that. Haven't had the chance to actually take a look at it and follow up, but we'd like to eventually purchase that through our normal processes, so that we can further digitize our support for the planning board and zoning board.
Do you want to talk about the workshop?
Sure. So, at this point in time, the attorneys that represent us, and also the hospital, medical district hospital, North Inducents Hospital, that are seeking a revision to the zoning code, have come to the point where they actually feel that all of the issues have been resolved. The legal language is ready for a broader review by the general public. So I'd like to propose that we set a meeting date for a workshop, so that the public could actually review this language and comment on it.
Very good. So what we'd like to do is get that out for distribution prior to the meeting or workshop. So is there any suggestions on a date?
Do you want me to get the calendar?
Calendar would be good. So while perhaps getting the calendar, we can kind of, let's try to narrow down the date a little bit.
I was going to propose the workshop for the water lines?
Yes.
Maybe the 30th. I don't know if we want to tackle some of this. Is that too much?
The workshop for the water lines is really more of a, is that the public information session as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
It's maybe less of a workshop, but I'm saying, could we do it, is that too much to handle?
I think we're going to have a lot of input for the water lines, personally. And a lot of questions that would take a long time.
It's probably going to push us into May, though, for the process.
Frank, do you have an idea what time we'll go?
The 30th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a minimum? Is our minimum rest date?
I'm on vacation till nineteenth. So if you want to do them back-to-back, I mean, in terms of one week followed by the next week, you can do one, the week of the twenty-second and the other one the week of the night.
So do the twenty-third and the thirty. The twenty-third and the thirty.
There was a meeting at seven o'clock, tree planting, pre-production meeting.
That can probably happen downstairs in the office.
Okay. And this is the medical district workshop, or is it still?
This is for the medical district workshop, the twenty-third.
At seven?
Of this month.
At seven.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay.
All right.
And where is the one that's, yeah?
Harden?
Where is the, where? Have we received it, or was it?
Yes, you have it. You have it.
I did, okay, I did, all right.
About a week.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So a lot of background discussion, sorry. We'll bring it forward now. What we'd like to do is, we've been working diligently on the medical district and have now draft code. This is still, this is still, hopefully, the last workshop before we go to a public hearing on the draft code for the medical district. It is a workshop. Let me remind everybody, it is not a public hearing, it is a workshop for the board. We will have planning board members here, we will have hospital members here, you know, associated to discuss any issues in regard to the latest draft that has come out for the medical district. Obviously, the public is more than welcome to attend. We appreciate your attendance, but it is a workshop for the organization to finalize the draft code. So we're setting that date for April twenty-third, seven PM, here at Village Hall. I'd like to make a motion for that date that we have the next medical district workshop on April twenty-third, seven PM at Village Hall.
Second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Stained? I hope you all come. All right. I would like to give, I promise to always give a brief update on where we are in short-term vacation rentals. As you, just to remind everybody, last month, on March fifteenth, we sent notices to people, we formed, I'll back up, we formed a task force. Task force did research identifying in the village those who have been operating as short-term vacation rentals, whether it's room rental or whatever, identified them, and we sent them all notifications to come in and be in compliance with the regulations that are currently on the book, you know, for short-term vacation rentals. We had thirty-eight notices that were sent out. Of those, we received nine, twelve, seventeen, we received eighteen back of the thirty-eight so far. If they had not responded in terms of setting up a date to come in with our zoning enforcement officer and start the process by April fifteenth, they will be sent a second notice, which is an order to comply. The first one was a notice to appear and get started, the next notice would be an order to comply. So that's the agenda that we're working towards, to get everybody on board and get those in compliance. Okay? I would also like to comment that we've got, I've been working with our legal, because we've been working for a long time on the draft code to get that finalized into a legal format. I just want to remind everybody, this is very complex. It's a complex issue to make sure that the village and our residents, everybody, and what we put forward for review for a public hearing is, can stand up in terms of the legality associated with all of that. So our legal team has been working on that. He's promised me an update by the end of next week. Having, if we do get that on time by the end of next week, we will then circulate it to the board for their review, and at our next meeting, we will then set a workshop for the draft code for short-term vacation rentals. Okay? So let's give you a timeline to keep everybody up to date, and where we are, that's what's happening today. I see a hand.
Clarification. When you, when you put it out to the public, you said you would then hold a workshop before that would go to a public hearing.
There is another workshop before a public hearing, that is correct. I'd just like to, it is a workshop, not a public hearing.
Mr. Davis, is there a reason why the board couldn't see the draft that's in progress with council?
On which, on the?
Which you just described.
Yeah, so he's supposed to give it to me by the end of next week. That's what I'm waiting for. I'm waiting for that draft.
Can we see it?
As soon as I get it, you will have it. As soon as I have the draft code, I will send it to, send it to you, the board.
Because we don't, we don't know where it came from.
It's gonna come from Rich Olson, our attorney.
Well, he doesn't come up with business terms and things like that. I don't.
I will send.
I have my own draft in November.
I will send, I will send the draft code out to you as soon as I get one back from legal.
Okay.
All right? He's promised to me by the end of next week, so that's when I will do that.
Okay. If Rich, for some reason, doesn't come through with the code by the end of next week, can the board still see that version?
I will get whatever I can from him. Yes, I think that's fair. Yeah. Very good. I can do it.
So there's a commitment that at least the members of the board will see something, even if it isn't the document by the end of next week?
Correct, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Provided he sends me something. I'll ask him to send it to me.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see it, even if it's still in a rough form.
Right. I don't have any problem with that. So working, he's working on a working draft. Okay?
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay. I think that completes building, planning, and zoning.
Highway. Okay. I need to tell the highway department. Regular brush pickup has begun and will continue through May fifteenth. That means that basically every day, the village highway department will be out picking up brush, leaves and such. We do ask if you're gonna put out limbs or, I shouldn't say limbs, but wood, that it should be no longer than four feet long. That's because they scoop it up into the bucket truck and, or with the bucket, it makes a lot easier. The activities will be continuous through May fifteenth, and then they will basically stop for two weeks through Memorial Day. And that's because the village highway department spends the next two weeks basically trying to spruce the village up for the Memorial Day parade and to make us really shine and spark on that day. So we'd like to ask that people don't put out lawn debris or leaves or anything during those two weeks, because we don't have the opportunity to pick them up, and we'd like the village to look nice. After Memorial Day, we'll return to our summer leaf pickup schedule, which is, we do the north side of the village, north of Marcus Street, on the first and third weeks of each month. We do the south side of the village on the second and fourth weeks of each month. And we're altering the schedule a little bit. We'd like to ask people to have all of their debris out by Wednesday of that week, if they can. And if they, obviously, the weekend a little bit earlier. And the reason why is we're gonna try to do pickups at the end of the week so that crews can go through, efficiently pick up the debris piles that are out there, not leave any, not leave any behind. So it's a little shift. Obviously, if somebody has something come up and they put something out and it's their turn to be, it's their side of the village that's being picked up, will come pick it up, but to make it easier for everybody involved, it'd be nice to have all the piles out by the Wednesday of that week. So if, does that make sense? Are you clear? Okay?
I think he had checking.
Okay. So if you're, if it's the first week of the month, we'd be picking up on the north side of the village for the convenience of the village crew, if you could have everything out by the first Wednesday, by the Wednesday of that week, that would be really nice. You don't have to, but that would be really nice. But certainly not any time after Friday, because obviously, then they're off, and then on Monday, they'd be moving to the other side of the village. So it's a little bit, we've been wrestling for a while with how to do leaf and brush pickup. It's an important service that the village provides, but it can be very time-consuming, and I'm sure we all agree that we don't like having big piles of leaves and brush that sit around for a week or two. So we're trying to make it a little bit more regular, a little bit more routine, keep the village cleaner, and provide a good service. So that's number one.
So this is not a new code?
It's not, this is nothing new.
What we've been doing.
Right. This is nothing new, and it is, was it, I believe, two years ago that that was passed? It's a while, two or three years ago. So we're just looking to really get people into the rhythm of the, of the system. We have received a number of letters. We know that the streets of the village are in terrible shape right now, and so we are, I know that Superintendent Fenton was out actually with Sergeant doing an inventory of the potholes. I assume it's a very long piece of paper they had. And we are looking to actually rent a piece of equipment that will help us fill potholes more quickly. The paving plants are open. We gave very clear instructions to the former metal highway department that he needs to start getting potholes filled, and we will do so with all dispatch. So it's been another rough winter. We know that the potholes are bad, but we are looking to get to them as quickly as possible.
Any, I know this is a lot of information, so is there any question, because it's important that everybody understand our brush pickup regulations as well as what we're trying to do? Yes, Suzanne? On up.
General Wilson.
Oh, Ben, stay back there.
It's hopefully allergies. So in the past, you had to have it out at a certain day, or you got a letter on your door. I know my neighbors got letters on their door for having it out on the wrong day. So I just want to make sure I'm clear that you're supposed to have it out on Wednesday, but what is the earliest day that you can have it out? Because, like I said, my, my neighbors got letters because they had it out, you know?
Right. I think that, I would say the Friday, starting the Friday of the week before. Yeah, so you have, so if we just work over the weekend, obviously, they can have it out over the weekend.
Okay. So the Friday before to the Wednesday.
To the Wednesday, and the Wednesday is not?
On the south side, so it would be like the Friday of the first week to the Wednesday of the second.
Right, and the Wednesday is a request, it's not a requirement. It's just a, it's a request.
It takes us, it takes us two days to do a sweep, a day and a half, a day to two days to do a sweep of either the south side or the north side. So if we pick up on Wednesday, starting on the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday in that schedule, and everybody has their refuse out at that time, we know that that side of the village is clear, right? Because then the next week, the opposite side of the village starts. Now, if you do, if you do put it out in a week when you're not scheduled for pickup, yes, there will be a notification given to you, because we are trying to keep the streets clear. It presents a traffic hazard for all of us, you know, if they're out there all the time, so, and it is, you know, a great service that we want to continue to do.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear so I can share whatever. So, thank you.
Right, and so, and when they're not picking up piles, they're out filling potholes.
Yes, Paul?
Well, I, I still have a question. The first week is defined by the first Monday, the first Wednesday?
Would be the first.
This month, this month started on a Monday. That's great. If the month starts on a Thursday?
First full week of the month.
First full week, okay.
And it's, so, and it's alternating, north side, south side.
Donna? I would just say, this is helpful clarification. Last year, I thought the instructions were out by Fri-, no, sooner than Friday, could you put it out? But we were scheduled on the north side for pickup on Monday, but Mondays didn't always occur. So now this makes good sense that there's several days there when they might be picked up.
We altered the schedule so that, or we asked the department to pick up at the end of the week rather than at the beginning, because we realize that people, you know, if they have that week, really, and that's the week, looks like, it'd be better for them to do it at the end of the week than not the beginning. So that's what we're trying to do.
To be clearly, to be very upfront and honest with you, like we always would be, we would do, we'd do a sweep on Monday. You put your stuff out on Monday, we would go through on Monday and do a sweep. Somebody else would put their stuff out on Wednesday when we're already done.
Right.
So now, if we concentrate the pickups to that last half of the week, we know that the street, we know that that side is clean, and there shouldn't be anything out there than the following week. Where last time, if you, if we went through on Monday and we never came back, it would be sitting out there for two weeks. So we're planning.
What we're trying to avoid. And just the habit that everybody has is, oh, they hear it being picked up, like, oh, yes, I should put my stuff out now.
They do a great job, I gotta say.
They, they work hard.
They come around the corner on Beach Street. I get, I get picked up right away.
I'm glad. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for I.
Any other questions? Because that's an important, any other questions on brush pickup highway? Having not, we're gonna go to the water department.
Okay. The low-lip pump station work is ongoing. The electric piece is completed. I will, I'll get to that first, but what's not, what's remaining is the work on the flood vents, the lower level and the flood proofing down there. They, this last month, they cleaned the settlement tanks. They repaired two water main breaks, because it's the time of year where you have freezing and thawing and, and you get some water. There's, I think there's one, it's someone's lawn right now, it's sort of a sign, but, so we had two last month. Normal maintenance throughout. The dredge, dredging is resumed, dredging the lagoon and the dredge. I got, hey, I got two pictures today, but I didn't have a chance to get it to you guys. The dredge boat is in, and it's like a, the front is a roller, it looks like a snow blower, and it just, and it goes down ten feet, and it just churns up all the muck, and then it takes, and then the pump takes it all out and then puts, and then sprays, pushes it up in these giant bags, which are each to the side of the tennis courts, probably. And then they get toward the end of the day, they're, this is the interesting part, and I'm, they're. They're like eight feet tall. There's so much water in these bags, they're about eight feet tall, and then they sink at night, and then they come out and do it the next day. But anyway, they ran into this tree that fell in with all the branches and everything, so I would like to make a motion that we have the tree removed. It's basically a change order for the, because only the director could do it, because he's in there and he's got the big giant excavator. It's only twelve hundred dollars. And this thing is buried, a large tree buried in the muck, so it's a good price, but it's in his way, so I would.
They stole the tree.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we remove this tree, that Peter Rossi, the contractor, removes the tree for twelve hundred dollars. That was my first issue.
The tree committee has no objection.
It's in quicksand.
Any discussion? It's been seconded, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Stained? So goes your tree.
Okay. As far as the water, the lower lip pump station, we have approval from our engineer for the last pay point on just the electrical piece, which is sort of like the phase one of that lower lip dry proofing or wet proofing. And it's an invoice that was approved by Crawford Associates for nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve that last payment. It's been approved by Crawford, I should have probably submitted it with the materials, but.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Stained? No carry.
As far as the water line project, which is.
So can I back up? Are you doing it on the other part of the low-lip pump station?
Yeah.
Because we still have to seal that.
Okay, so they're doing the plans and specifications for the epoxy painting of the lower, lower level, and then we're gonna try to do it in-house. But we're waiting on the specs, so our folks know what to do.
Okay.
On that last part of it.
Because that's important.
Yeah. We'll get that out done before hurricane season. As far as the water line project, which is a large project where we're, we're replacing the water main under Route Nine on Livingston, Chestnut, and Platt, we just got the bid package done today as far as the draft, and it went to our attorney, Rich Olson, and Rich obviously couldn't go through it all today, because it's like a book, but he said he would probably have it done by the end of the week. So at that point, we, I would want to vote for, to allow this bid package to go out of bid, but I'm leaving next week, early in the week. I don't know when you're leaving, but I'm leaving on Monday. I don't know if we could, if it's done this week, maybe we could have a quick workshop on Saturday. I don't want to hold up the calendar on, on the bid package.
Can we prove that pending his approval?
I don't know. I don't know. That's a good question, that's, but it's a...
It's a big package.
Multi-million dollar approval.
I'd rather not. I'm going from the 12th to the 19th.
When is the 12th?
Friday.
Friday. Well, if three of us were around, we could do it. I don't see you guys, that anyone would really object to it if it's approved by our attorney. I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Brandon, is Sunday in Boston, Saturday?
Well, you'll be here Sunday, maybe we could do it Sunday then.
I'm here Sunday.
Okay. So, and to that end, we'd also like to do a public discussion slash workshop on the whole project. Because now we're gonna have a bid package, we're gonna go out to bid, and then it's gonna be awarded sometime early next month, perhaps. So, I looked at dates with Pat, and it seemed like September 30th?
No.
April 30th.
April 30th.
Great, geez.
April 30th, which is a week after the, you know, our workshop on the 23rd, which would be three weeks from this evening, is, is open. Would that be okay? We, oh, and STANTEC, the engineers can come to that as well.
Wait, that's the Tuesday, I'm, I'm thinking.
That's the 27th.
Oh.
Is it 30th? Because we need it public.
Yeah. Then we should push it in the mail.
The following day, May 1st?
Is that a Tuesday?
There's court here at 6:00.
Oh, the following day.
There's court.
There's court on Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thurs- Thursday, there's court, it's at 4:00 o'clock.
That's May 2nd.
Yeah.
What time are you thinking of having this public session?
Probably 7:00 when people are done with work, you know? 6:00, I mean, if you guys want it 6:00, I guess we could, but is that too early, or...
I don't think so.
I think 6:00 to 8:00.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Is what I'm thinking, 6:00 to 8:00.
Okay, 6:00 to 8:00. Now, we haven't checked with STANTEC.
Are we looking at the May 2nd?
Yeah, we have to ask...
I have to check with court to see if they'll be done in two hours. Thursday, court at 4:00.
We could go to a Tuesday. Or is that a planning board night? The first Tuesday?
Planning board, planning board tree and...
Oh, that's right.
And Mondays are fire. Thursday, the 9th of May, there's nothing, but then you're really pushing it up to 6:00.
But that's okay. Nothing's gonna be going on at that point, as far as shovels in the ground.
So Thursday, the 9th is, there's nothing on the calendar.
So May 9th? So the affected areas?
I'm available after 6:30 on May 9th.
Okay, how about at 7:00?
6:30.
Or 6:30.
Or 6:30?
No, 6:30.
Okay.
May 9th, 6:30?
Yeah.
We need to advertise the heck out of this.
So let's, but let's say right now that this is, the affected area is Route 9 from Market Street to the Y kind of at the hospital, and then from Livingston, Platt, and Chestnut all the way to Mulberry, except for Livingston goes to Beach. So that's the affected area. So if you're residents there, or a commercial person there, and you have a service line on the water system, this will affect it.
So will you, will you send notices to all those residents?
A letter notice? For the, I wasn't gonna, we weren't gonna, we were gonna post it.
I liked, I liked Donna's suggestion.
You wanna send a mailing?
I think we should because it's so important. We have so many people questioning this.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and I think because...
We have, there's been a mailing already, but we can do that.
But the mailing was about, about it, now this is a mailing to come to a meeting.
Sure. So we have a list, that's fine.
We have a list. Okay?
May 9th to 6:30.
And we'll send out a public meeting notice for that.
Yeah.
Is there a thought to actually listing all the notices that will go out on our website as well?
Yes.
This is a special meeting, this is a legal notice that has to go out. Any special meeting is a legal notice, so it gets published on our website, email blast, fix one question.
Yeah, okay, so, but I meant the actual names of the people that are going to be affected on that street. So you're sending them a letter, obviously, but it's, I would think it'd be advantageous to just basically list and say, oh, these folks are actually going to be getting letters, so there's this double notification.
Everybody on those streets got to get it. Nobody, do we know what we missed?
Nobody missed, okay.
Yeah. Right? Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, and we've inspected all but 20 of the service lines, and I looked it up on the real property, and half of them were out of area. So we've reached out to almost everyone.
Of the ones you inspected, what's, what's the ones that you're finding would, would need to be replaced?
Uh, what was there, 16?
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, project 16, but then maybe four or five more, 20 have not been looked at. And then Donna, I couldn't, I did, I looked at Donna's and I couldn't figure it out.
But you're not in the affected area.
She might.
We don't know.
No.
We don't know.
Change of plan?
I'm 20 feet from the little water line.
The valve was right, it was right next to the wall, I couldn't tell what, what it was made of, so.
All right.
Good sir.
Waste Water Department. John?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave these numbers into the record if I could, into the, into the minutes. Waste water treated for the month of March, 4 million gallons, gallons of sludge processed, 29,200 gallons, pounds of sludge processed, 4,306 pounds for the month of March. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to show the board that I did meet with our plant supervisor briefly last week, and Brian, the supervisor of Rambo, and the team will be giving me a tour this coming Thursday morning, which I greatly welcome because I know nothing about the wastewater and sewage, and anxious to be supportive of the great work these guys do. Thank you.
Okay, and that's it?
That's it, sir, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the department reports as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, very good, thank you. We're gonna get into committee reports. First committee report, there is nothing in the cloud, but you all, all of the board has in front of them a package that looks like this, okay? This package, we've now made a transition on the Autism Supportive Community Awareness Committee in terms of making the village of Rhinebeck more autistic awareness, and getting not only our businesses, but organizations and churches, et cetera, to just do one thing. And it's really, we're talking about nothing big, but do one thing to support autism awareness. So our next meeting is to really meet with now stakeholders, and in this package, you'll find two packages. First is a stakeholder's package, so we've identified a half a dozen people who are now stakeholders that have volunteered to be part of the organization that will go out to the different businesses. For instance, we have a stakeholder for restaurants. That person will take this package, right? They'll be first on, let me back up. First, on April 11th, they're gonna be trained to what it means to be a stakeholder, to go out and represent us. And within that package, there's information about what it means to be a stakeholder, that you will be representing, representatives from village businesses and organizations to ask for pledges to do one thing, right? And with that, they then go out and they have information that can help that organization to help them what it means to do one thing. It's, there's, there'll be a list, and then I'll give an example, and our, our hashtag is hashtag one thing. It's how to reduce noise and lower volumes, if that's applicable to your business. That's one thing. I'll pick another issue. Eliminate any safety hazards in your business, or your organization, or your group, right? Offer reduced wait times for maybe restaurants that have lines of wait. If you call ahead, we can, they would be amenable to get people who are on a spectrum in and seated and processed quicker, to reduce that time to be able to do that. Another example is to allow the families to come and do a walkthrough. Before they attend and go for dinner, it's important that anybody on the spectrum, right, be, have the ability to see where they're going and what they're dealing with. It helps them process. So hashtag one thing. We're not asking for people to spend money, right? We're asking for them to do one thing, all right? So in this form, they would then work with these, as an example, we have, I'll pick on somebody in the audience, oh, excuse me, Brenda Bassett's here. I'm gonna pick on Brenda Bassett. Brenda is a stakeholder for the churches, right? She will be, she will be taking this package forward to the churches, and after she's trained on the 11th, to be able to then work with them and give them what is then the member packet, okay? So in the member packet, they would be asked, we would work with them to identify what that one thing would be. And then they would fill out, as you would want to go to us, there's a pledge form, which is further in the package. It's a hashtag one thing pledge form, which is this organization, and in this case, Ms. Bassett would go to the church and ask the church to do one thing. And it may be as simple as providing accessory items in the back of the church that would help anybody on the spectrum to be able to get to that sermon. Another example is just a walkthrough of what to expect if you're at a service, so that you can prepare somebody to be able to go through it. These are the kind of things that the stakeholder would then work with those organizations to do. So we have stakeholders for churches, restaurants, retail organizations, services, like hair salons, financial things, all that kind of stuff. I'm missing, I'm missing somebody. But anyways, these stakeholders have all been identified, they've all gratefully volunteered to want us, work with us, and the Autism Supportive Committee to be able to roll, to roll this out. And so this will be starting immediately after April 11th meeting to get people in our community engaged and involved. Our police department, if you don't, I mentioned this before, our police department has already done hashtag one thing, and in their cars, they now carry kits that if they are able to, at a scene, and they see somebody that is on the spectrum, they can use this kit, whether it be headphones because of noise, or whether it be a squeaky toy for a child, right? That then gives them comfort that they can do it. Or they arrive on a scene, and I will tell you, they've already used a kit. So, they wouldn't have been able to do that if they didn't have this kit, they've already made it. So this is an example of one thing. Our fire department, oh, that's present, I'm the representative, I'm the stakeholder for the village municipality, and I'm working with our fire department. What our fire department is planning on doing is soliciting names, and it'll be voluntary, and we find that people want to identify themselves, so that if we, the fire department has to respond via EMS or a fire to a home that has somebody on the spectrum, they will respond with no lights and sirens, right? Which is a very important thing for somebody that, that's on the spectrum. And it'll be in our CAD system, so immediately when that call comes out, the fire department will know immediately how to respond to that situation. So they're working on that, as well as some other things to support autism awareness. So this is our kit, this is our package that we're rolling out. We have until the end of June from the grant from Thompson Trust Foundation to be able to complete this Phase 1, which is dedicated to just the village of Rhinebeck and organizations within the village of Rhinebeck. And when they complete, I'll just file, when they complete, they're gonna get a sticker like this, that they will be able to put on their windows or anywhere where it's available, so that people who are visiting the village of Rhinebeck will know that this organization is supportive of people needing support for autism awareness. So that'll be an identification for them, okay? Any questions on the packet, or stakeholders from the board, or even from the public, on what we're trying to accomplish in the village of Rhinebeck?
I was just saying, Mr. Mayor, you gave the board a great advance through email on this, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep. We are working for, to find a, to find a sensory safe place for our Memorial Day Parade, which we did in the holiday tree lighting, which was very well received. So we're trying to continue that tradition and find a safe place along the parade, along the parade route. There is an autism awareness walk that is put on by the county. It is being scheduled for April 28th, and it's in La Grange at the park, which I will, myself and other members of the committee will be participating in to support autism awareness at the walk coming up in La Grange on April 28th. That's it for the autism. Any questions? Okay. Tree committee?
Okay. The tree committee is, has been and will be extremely busy. We have our upcoming tree planting day for the spring on April 27th, and on, that's Saturday, we'll be meeting at 9:00 at Rhinebeck High School. And on this year's agenda, we are planning to plant 21 trees. And our chairwoman, Meg Crawford, has been working really hard. On the day of the planting, people will come, they'll be assigned into work groups, they'll, trees will already be laid out, the supplies will be laid out, the holes will be dug. And this event, it's a very wonderful event for, for the volunteers to come out on the day, but I really want to highlight that the tree, the tree committee and the highway department, working together, really do a lot of work to get this thing, to get this event together. The trees have to be received down at the highway department, they have to be taken care of, covered with mulch and kept moist during the week that they're here, and they have to be removed. Trees need to be laid out, holes need to be dug, water buckets, stakes, all kinds of things, all kinds of things need to be accomplished. So the committee's been working really hard to get all of these items done, and I would say we have, you guys have a list of the 21 sites, or the 20 trees, and the sites where they're being planted. And I'd like to point out, this is really a, a really lasting contribution the volunteers are making to the village. Hopefully, these trees will be here for 25, 30, 40-plus years. Everybody loves to see a nice, healthy urban forest, a nice, healthy canopy. And it's really through the auspices of these volunteers that Rhinebeck is able to maintain and even improve our urban forest. So, we, the Interact Club has volunteered to come out on the 27th, but that doesn't mean that anybody else who's interested is welcome to come and also learn about the tree committee. So once again, it's Wednesday, April 27th, 9:00, 9:00 AM, at Rhinebeck High School, we'll be meeting in the parking lot and going off to the sites from there. The other item, and I can start you the motion to accept the sites? Pat? No? Okay. The other thing, I'd like to get a motion from the board. As you know, we've been a tree, a Tree City USA for the past 10 years running. We just received our designation. That's because we do the things that are necessary to maintain a really healthy urban, urban forest, urban canopy. So I actually have a resolution, and it's an annual resolution that we put out in honor of Arbor Day, and we do that, and that is actually the first step in our becoming a Tree City USA. So we'll say, I can read it, it's not too long. It says, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are source of joy, excuse me, a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So we ask that Gary Bassett, the mayor of the village of Rhinebeck, does proclaim April 27th Arbor Day, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, urges all citizens to plant... Further urges all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So I'd like a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept. I would second.
All in favor? Opposed? Stained? I'd like to do this.
All right, there you go. Very good. I do have one question for you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have an update on the beaver?
Although he, the beaver is still, has not been sighted in several weeks, so we don't know what happened.
So just to let people know, there has been, a beaver has been cutting down some trees over by the Lions Park. And we requested and received a permit from the Department of Rhineburg Conservation to trap the said fellow. However, it's been about two, three weeks now.
Yes.
And the traps remained empty, and I think that the activity has slowed down.
Correct.
Hopefully, that is, that is correct. So if you do look around, you will notice that there are some, some trees. We have some trees that have been attacked by, that were taken down. We haven't also seen where the potential dam site might be.
Or den.
Or den that we're looking for. So that has not been spotted either. So maybe the critters moved on, I don't know. But, so that's, if you, if you see the damage, we are, we do know that it's out there, and we're looking to mitigate it.
He's one suggestion I'd like to make when you plant the trees, most people don't know how often they should be watered or taken care of.
Yes.
Let the homeowner who has the tree be aware of it. I got, you know, you put three of my property, I didn't know how, how many times they shouldn't have watered.
Okay, well, I don't know, how long ago did they?
Three years ago.
So one of the things that the tree committee started in this year, or last year, was to have a little bag, a little set of care instructions, actually zip-tied to the tree. So exactly that for a homeowner, so they would know it says, hi, this is your tree, that gives you the, gives you the kind of tree that it is, the watering schedule, that kind of stuff. So there is, I think the tree committee did realize that that was an issue, that people were not getting instructions. So you'll see, you'll see, I'll, see on the tree, it's a little set of instructions. Because it is that early watering is essential for long-term growth. Thank you.
All right. Environmental committee. The environmental committee met on the first Thursday of the month. This month, we discussed International Energy Conservation Code. The International Energy Conservation Code is an organization that drafts new building codes and for the efficiency of our building departments. So they, basically, it's the book that John Fenton gets, or our Building and Zoning Force Officer, that he has to comply with after the codes are adopted. There is a opportunity to join this organization and be a voting member of the International Energy Conservation Code for a fee of $135. That fee of $135 gives us early access to the code and possible voting rights to what's being amended. Paul, trustee Korzak brought this to the environmental committee as a representation on the committee, and I'm gonna turn it over to Paul to talk a little bit more about the details that are involved in this.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the spirit and intent of the environmental committee, we're always looking for ways to gather information that will inform our actions. And so we came across this, this International Energy Conservation Code is actually a product, a joint product of our own United States Department of Energy, Building Energy Codes Program, as well as the International Code Council. And really, this is just a resource for us. The International Energy Conservation Code was first introduced about 20 years ago in 1998, and it undergoes regular revisions. Membership will allow us to actually participate in that revision process. There are actually about 400 communities in the United States that have actually signed up for this, including our own neighbors in Kingston and Hudson. So there's a local interest in this as well. And a particular interest to us is the fact that conservation is defined broadly. So in terms of cost savings, in terms of reduced energy usage, in terms of conservation of natural resources, and of course, the impact of energy use on the environment. So with this $135 a year, $11.50 a month, we get a toolkit, we get to see the code, we get to consult with experts from around the world, and basically remain and keep ourselves up to date, especially as we try and address zoning issues and changes in the code here. So I'd like to strongly recommend that we actually invest in our future with this membership.
Done a motion?
That's a motion to become members of the International Energy Conservation Code Committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, do you know when the last revision was?
The last revision was in 2018, so the next one's coming out 2020.
Did you say 2021 here?
Uh, 2021, excuse me, 2021.
I think they're on a two-year cycle.
Two, two, three-year cycle, so they're starting the cycle now.
Are, are you gonna be a representative then?
Uh, that hasn't been decided yet.
So I think, if we're gonna do it, we should just, you could be passive and not join this and still comply with it, I mean, but if we're going to join, I think we need a representative that's gonna be enthusiastic about it.
It gives us our opportunity to vote on what's being done. So I don't believe we should be passive. I believe we should voice our opinion.
Well, I'm just saying, I was just wondering who that was gonna be.
Yes. So our plan from the environmental committee is to bring these regulations into the environmental committee, and from the environmental committee, make recommendations to the board.
Okay.
So that's how the representation would be, if we so choose to want to.
It's an information resource, really. It's basically saying, you know, what's, are we giving us access to what's happening around the globe, quite frankly? And also to have access to other members, you know, there's 400 other members, cities, large and small, really. And so have access to a cross-section of ideas that we can choose to review, you know, participate, have our input, and so forth.
So is there an opportunity to impact the versions?
I'm sorry?
Is it an opportunity to?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. If you vote, you're, you're one of the voting members, so it's very important.
So we have a motion, we have a second to join as a member to the International Energy Conservation Code. All in favor? Opposed? Stained? So carry. So Paul, will you give us the membership so we can get that in?
Sure.
Quickly? I do believe there's a deadline. That's fast. Emergency Preparedness Committee. Rhinebeck Emergency Preparedness Committee, this is a joint committee between the village and the town. I'm gonna summarize some of this. Emergency Preparedness Committee has met for the month of March at Town Hall, and the discussion was predominantly on getting the community to opt into various notification systems. So that is an ongoing discussion. On March 22nd, the Emergency Response Coordinator met with the Rhinebeck Preparedness Healthcare Coalition Exercise Design Team. Got that? This team has been ongoing for quite some time. It meets monthly in preparation of regional preparedness to drill for, drill with healthcare providers in the Hudson Valley. They will next, we're working, they are working with currently to have another drill in the spring, and they're working very closely with Sergeant Pete Dunn of our village PD to attend, and then also our village volunteer fire department to be part of this next discussion for that. And with that, they've made arrangements to go forward for the Dutchess County Department of Emergency Services to present a citizens' preparedness training in the, here in the village of Rhinebeck. They, they're held across the county. We have asked for it to be held here in, in Rhinebeck at the Town Hall, and that will be on June 13th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Town Hall. There is a flyer that we will send out, but I would like to ask to make a motion that this village board allow, which we need to do, allow for the Dutchess County Department of Emergency Services to hold their citizens' preparation meeting here on June 13th from 6:00 to 9:00 at Town Hall.
It's at Town Hall.
Town Hall.
Did you say here?
Well, it's good, it's here at, at Town Hall. So I'm sorry.
So we don't need to have a motion?
Oh, we don't have to? Well, it's, it's a joint, this is a joint village and town coordinated meeting.
But they're not using our building?
They're not using our building, but no, we have, I think it's important that we as a village adopt and accept their county proposal to have it here.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking for.
I was confused.
I'm making a motion to allow the county to hold their next citizens' emergency services meeting here in Rhinebeck.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
Is it six? Cause I, I thought something, one of the things said seven.
Six to nine?
It says six to nine, yeah.
We'll send out a flyer, because the public is invited to be able to. So all in favor? Opposed? Stained? So carry. Veterans Committee. Just get to that quickly. We meet, I meet monthly with a veterans committee that made up of veterans and, and other org, and other members. This month, I met with myself, Dennis McGuire, Gary Rome, and Pat Coon, who are in attendance at a meeting. We've been discussing for the last two months, getting the veterans involved into different activities. We also discussed at this meeting, the coin drop for the end of Memorial Day Parade. The veterans committee has decided to hold their coin drop on Montgomery Street this year for the purposes of, of their event. And then, as I mentioned last month, we took on two activities. One was to either adopt a war dog, or the second was to offer pets for veterans to be able to get out. The committee voted and approved to move forward on adopting a, adopting two war dogs. War dogs are animals that are placed in service, that are overseas, and we often recognize the efforts of our military, but we also want to recognize the efforts of our military and those military personnel who use dogs as part of the preparation of our emergent, our, our response overseas. So the committee is working now closely with Marlena Payne to identify two war dogs that we could, as a veterans committee, send care packages to. That'll, that'll go out to them. So we're working on defining what that means, the cost associated with it, and hopefully to see if we can get donations to cover the cost of shipping, right? So I'll keep everybody informed on, hopefully, we were able to adopt two war dogs and, and then, and have them identified, and the public can get involved with support of that. That's it for the veterans committee. Special requests. Always say it all night. Sorry, Keith. First is the Dutchess County Fair restricted road access. I don't see it in the list.
It's, um.
DC Fair. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong title. So this is from the Dutchess County Fairgrounds. Dutchess County Fairgrounds said, sent a letter to us. Dear Mayor Bassett, the Board of Directors of Dutchess County Agricultural Society, Inc., respectfully submits the dates to restrict vehicular traffic on Mulberry Street north from Platt Avenue, except for access to designated parking lots. Parking lot in attendance will be at the end of Mulberry and Platt to direct vehicles to their, to the designated parking lots. Dates for restricted vehicular traffic are as follows. Thursday, May 2nd through Tuesday, May 7th for the Antique Car Show. Tuesday, August 13th through Tuesday, August 27th for the Dutchess County Fair. And there'll be signs that will be posted informing the public prior to the restriction of the vehicular traffic, and they've also enclosed a copy of the fair schedule. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the restriction of vehicular traffic on Mulberry Street north from Platt on, on the dates.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there was a, a letter from a resident nearby that rents out spaces during the, is the restriction gonna prohibit that person from continuing in their endeavor?
That's why.
And there, the two people over there that are?
That's why it's written the way it is. Because it respectfully submits the dates for restrict vehicular traffic to, except for, except for the access to designated parking lots.
Right, I wanted to make sure it was private.
Private parking lots, correct.
As well as their own.
It's not just fair parking lots.
Right.
We're taking into account the two private lots that are there.
And that's okay with everyone?
We haven't had, we haven't had any rebuttal back.
Okay.
Right. Their concern was, they know when the street closed, and that's one of the reasons, you know, we moved from last month, because there was a restriction on closing the street, and it really is not being closed.
It's not really.
Okay. It's really being, not through traffic, but allowed for parking.
It's a compromise.
Yes, well, it's what we did last year. It's just putting in more terms.
What, when people last, that at the corner of, of Platt and Mulberry, they put their barricade up right there, and they had a gentleman standing there telling them that there was no parking, the place was closed, it was full up, and it wasn't.
Yes. And that was identified and hopefully rectified for this year, so that there's communication to that parking lot attendant, so it's not just, he's not getting communication about the fair lots that were full, he's getting communication about all lots that'll be at the end of that street. So I agree, there was confusion, and we tried to address it immediately that day, which we did. I think I made a motion to accept.
Yes.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Stained? So carry. Next on the list, Mirabou liquor license. I can't expand this as well, it's still loading. So anyways, this, this has been approved by our village police department as for approval of a liquor license of, of Mirabou, of Rhinebeck LLC and Mirabou Hospitality Services. Right? And its hotel, they require the full restaurant open to the public and public premises. So any, I think the board's had an opportunity to read this. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the liquor license for Mirabou.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only concern I had was the reference in the application through live music, although we probably don't have the authority to reject the liquor license. Their live music can be regulated through the zoning code.
Correct.
If it's outdoors, or it's too loud.
Too loud.
Et cetera, so.
Yep, I agree.
Is there a reason that they called it American music? Cause no other type of music.
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, I noticed that, dude. I was wondering what that.
All types of American music.
Well, I would think so. No, no other.
Okay. Municipal Clerk's Week and 50th Anniversary. To that one? I'm like, it's hard to do this. Mirabou Municipal Clerk. I'd like to make notice to identify Municipal Clerk's Week on May 5th to 11th of 2019. That's the only page we have on it, right?
Maybe that's the 50th Anniversary.
50th Anniversary of Municipal Clerk's Week, May 5th to 11th of 2019. I don't, I don't know if we have to vote on that, but we, I would like to recognize that this is there, we'll so duly identify it. And thank you to all of our clerks in the village hall who serve us all year long. Our, here is our village clerk, Pat Coon, but we also have our treasury clerk, and our courts clerk, and our building and zoning lands clerk, so this is in recognition of all the clerks that's helped serve the village of Rhinebeck.
Police clerk, yes, or?
What?
The police clerk.
Police clerk, sorry. Yes. Next, Rhinebeck Farmer's Market table request from the Rhinebeck Republican. Let me get to that. This is from the Rhinebeck Republican Committee on behalf of the chairman, Frank Inavello, to use the table at our, at our farmer's market on the west side. And the dates, there's a full list of dates running basically, May 12th, May 26th, June 2nd, June 30th, July 21st, August 4th, August 18th, September 1st, oh, excuse me, August 18th, September 1st, September 15th, October 13th, October 27th, and November 10th. Table from the Rhinebeck Republican Committee.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Pat, check the dates against the Democratic use and sever.
And the one thing I'd say, I just wanna remind people that this is really the village's table at the farmer's market table, cause I know sometimes people come up to the farmer's market and say, hey, how can you do this? It's actually the village, this is a It's actually the village, this is a village provided amenity that we have, it's coming from us, not the farmer's market. And it's open to, first come, first served basis, and our only restriction is that one entity can't show up more than twice a month.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stained? So carried. Next on the list. Lions Club. There's a lot of information, I don't know if the board has had a chance to review all of the information on the Lions Club, but let me read to you their request. Sorry, something's going on online. Lions Club's special request form. Alright, this is from the Rhinebeck Lions Club, on behalf of the president, Sean Kemp. They requested locations on Route 9 at Gamete Bank and East Market Street at Stickles for the dates. I haven't ordered the dates. I don't see any dates here. Other dates? There's no dates on the form.
The 4th and 5th of May.
Do you see them?
Yeah, on the second page.
I'm on the second.
On his, uh, letter.
Oh, on his letter, alright, so let me get back, let me get back to the letter then. Is that the Rhinebeck Lions Club request?
Yeah.
Alright, so...
From 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yeah.
The 4th and 5th of May.
4th and 5th of May. So let's discuss this. This is, this is something that we've been notified of in terms of this, the New York State DOT. And let me just read the law in summary of what the DOT trap, vehicle and traffic law says. Section 1157A provides that no person shall stand in roadway for the purpose of soliciting a ride, or to solicit from, or sell to an occupant of any vehicle. Okay? 1157C provides an exception that states in no, uncertain terms, that no person shall occupy any part of the state highway, and then it gives, except in a city or village. Okay? For the purpose, in any manner, for the purpose of selling or soliciting. Now, that's the vehicle and traffic law that comes from DOT. We've been notified as a village of Rhinebeck that any use of state roads requires a New York State DOT permit to be able to move forward. So whether it's a road race, a Halloween parade, center clause, coin drop, et cetera, requires a New York State DOT approval. Okay? So having said that, the American Legion has said, we're going to move to Mulberry Street, to, I mean, to Montgomery Street, to, for this year, to do that, to, you know, to be, to be in compliance. The Legion has said, we want to exercise the exception clause, and actually conduct a coin drop on Route 9 and Market Street.
Legion or Lions?
Lions, Lions, okay. Legion, the Lions, apology. To do that. Now, it's an issue. And so I've been around and around with this, I've gone to all of the other adjoining cities and/or villages, they do not allow coin drops on state roads, predominantly for the reason not pertaining to this law, but pertaining to safety. They have all, the city of Poughkeepsie says no. Right? You know, so, they do not allow it, and it's pertaining for safety. Our village police had said, we have safety concerns with anybody doing a coin drop. Right? DOT has sent us a letter saying, coin drops are strictly prohibited. Right? In summary. I now went to...
But there are exceptions.
What?
But there are exceptions.
There's exception in this code that says to the city, but they, it doesn't say for coin drops, it just says for purposes of soliciting and selling.
Yeah, DOT is not recognizing the exception. Right?
Right, they're not recognizing. They would like to have the coin drop, which they had, which Paula said they've done for 30 years, you know, in the village of Rhinebeck. So, going to legal, and legal has advised, says that we really, as a village board, do not have any jurisdiction over coin drops on state roads. So as an application for an event, I'm trying to summarize a lot of things here, as an application for an event, right? We don't have the jurisdiction to approve it, to even conduct a coin drop. It's really on the applicant to get the permission from whatever required agency that they feel is necessary, for them to conduct their coin drop. Right? So, what I'm going to ask the board to do tonight is to say, as a village board, we should not be approving or disallowing coin drops on state highways, because we do not have the jurisdiction to be able to do that. And it's really to the event organizer to get whatever approval they feel they need, which has been identified as New York State DOT, to get the permit to be able to do that. So, I would like to have further discussion on this, but my recommendation to the board is, we do not...
Regulate.
Or regulate coin drops on state roads. We allow coin drops, and with approval of our event application, on any village road. Right? Which is totally allowed, and we have total jurisdiction over our village roads. We do not have authority or jurisdiction over state roads to do this. Okay? So, the law is vague, the law is not, you know, identifiably say, you can do this, but you can't do this. We have a letter from DOT saying they will not do it, we have advice from our legal council that says, we don't have the jurisdiction to do it. So, my recommendation to the board is that we do not act on this, and we leave it to the event organizer to go forth and procure whatever approvals they need to operate, and conduct a, a coin drop on New York State highways.
Can we revisit the, the portion, and I appreciate the, the research and analysis you've done, but you referenced other villages and municipalities that you've talked to who have said...
City of Poughkeepsie, right, so far, the city of Poughkeepsie has said, we do not allow it. Village of Red Hook says, we allow one, we allow the fire department, and only the fire department, because they have insurance to cover them in case of...
So it's a mixed bag, some municipalities...
And so, when I went to our last meeting, the Douglas County Super Resident Mayor, everybody else said they do not allow it, but I didn't get into any particulars at that meeting. So, it's not, it is a mix, because...
I misunderstood, I thought you said, Gary, Mr. Mayor, that it worked, municipalities that were allowing this.
No. No, I didn't say that. If I did, that's what I said.
I said, I might have misunderstood.
Yeah, well, yeah, right.
I mean, I think it's important that you, and I appreciate that you did all that research, but, you know, the bottom line in my mind is the advice of council, and the advice of council is, we don't have the jurisdiction. I don't think we can, in any way, ignore that advice, it'd be our own peril, quite frankly.
If we were to approve this, and there was an incident, we are now liable.
Exactly.
So, we don't have a jurisdiction over the state roads.
So I agree with your approach to this, I would support that.
I want to make sure that we're not going to enforce on, under the umbrella of the DOT. In other words, we're just going to totally stay out of it.
We're going to stay out of it. Now, to put all the cards on the table, if organization XYZ holds a coin drop on Market Street, which is a state road, right, and there is a complaint, the complaint goes to New York State Police. The New York State Police will then turn that complaint over to the village police, and ask the village police to exercise and remove the issue. So that's how the process will work.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think we, I don't want to be deputized to enforce it, even though in those circumstances.
But that's what... You can't pick and choose, right?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, you can. What do you mean? He's reading a portion of the state statute that apparently the DOT is not recognizing. So I don't want to...
They're not recognizing the exception.
I don't want to be a marshal, I'm not, I'm not going to be a marshal for their exception that they're ignoring.
Then we can put it back on the state police, they have to, they have to act, they have to choose that or not. You know, so, and our village police can choose to say, sorry, you know, but if there's a safety issue, our village police will get involved. We will not ignore safety issues for the public. That's one thing we will not do. Right? So, it has to be conducted in a safe manner, and if somebody complains about safety, and they file a complaint, we then have to get involved to exercise safety.
That, that actually was the point that you made, that the other municipalities said, we're going to not allow this because of issues of safety, not because of what the state law is asserting.
They, they, they think all coin drops are not a safe environment to be in.
For that reason, right.
So, we will exercise safety, but if it's because they're conducting a coin drop, that can be a matter of the state police to decide.
The comment on that safety part, that's part of the reason that we want it there, because of the red light, it stops the people, the cars don't come screaming through, and when they do move, we move out of the way. We have safety cones on both ends, we're wearing jackets, bright colored jackets.
It's generally a safe activity, it's part of it.
No, we've had instances where it's not safe. We've had other organizations who have done it, and we had, literally had a very severe situation where organizations had children out there on Route 9.
Well, it's not them, yes.
I know, it's not them, I'm just saying, I didn't say it was them.
I mean, that children, I can't, you're very different level, I grew up very...
So that's why we will act on the safe manner.
I just have a feeling this is going to come back to the, the local constabulary.
How do I respond to this application, or do I not respond at all?
We, we respond, if the board agrees, we respond with, this is not an event that's within our jurisdiction.
Okay.
And it's up to the event organizer to get whatever permits or whatever approvals they need to conduct a coin drop on state roads.
So, we're only responsible to the DMV, is what you're saying? If we go out there and we do it, we're only responsible to show them any kind of permit or proof? Is that what you're saying? We're not responsible to, to you at all?
We're not responsible, except for safety.
Well, safety...
Except for safety, we will exercise safety.
Yeah, well, we've had that for 30 years, and that's why we, we've got a safe way of doing it.
What's going to happen is, you're going to do it, and somebody else is going to do it, and somebody else is going to do it, and...
We can call somebody else.
It's the same situation, so...
We do it as safe as we possibly can.
So what I'm asking the village board to do, to say, we will not authorize, or not authorize, coin drops on state roads. It's up to you, the organizer, to get that permit that is required by DOT.
That's what I was basically saying.
Right, and if you choose not to get the permit, that's your choice. If you choose to get the permit, go for it. That's what I'm asking the board for. So I'd like to make a motion that we do not vote on approving this organization and allow, you know, for allowing it, but we allow the organization to go get their own approval for state roads. If they want to use village roads, they come through the normal process, process of the event, application, and we go through the normal process.
Second, Matt.
I just want to say...
Any discussion?
Well, I just want to say, it's an unfortunate situation, because the ground shifted under our feet.
Absolutely.
That, it used to, it used to be that the village went ahead and, and, and did these things, and, and it wasn't a problem, however, I don't know if it's new legal or legal information that's come up to us at this point, that says basically, we can't do that anymore. And it's heartbreaking for us, because we're a very worthy and good organization that depends upon, depends upon this, this dysfunction, but it also seems like, because the ground has shifted, we need to step out of it at this point.
This is being debated all over the state.
Yeah.
So it's not just us, it's being debated all over the state because of the vagueness of the law.
Yeah. And it's, you know...
So from a liability point, I do not think we should approve it, but I would also say that it's up to the organization to get whatever permits that they need.
May I ask the gentleman in the back, if you have any additional thoughts, comments?
No, I mean, you've, you've made your point clear, you've, you've told me where your standard isn't, much that can be done other than try to change the law at this point, so we have to go before the DMV and apply for a permit.
It's not DMV, well, it's DOT.
DOT.
New York State DOT.
DOT, and apply for a permit. Once we get the permit, then we're able to stand out there and do it.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it, the law's the law, you're just not going to get around it.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
I think this is an amenable way to, yeah, I don't think we'll do it.
Yeah, I guess the best, I agree with Britt, it's a difficult situation, probably the best way to handle it.
Yep, we want to, we want to support the organizations, and we support you to do any village street. We have some high-volume village streets that are very safe, and approved by our police department, and you are so well entitled to use any of those village streets to safely conduct any coin drop that you want.
We appreciate that very much, I mean, but that is a part of our lion's club, you're giving the money.
But the money we collect there, over 50% of it goes to the mini park alone.
Yeah, we're not denying you the ability to get the money for saying...
I know, I know what you're saying.
In village streets, we're still giving the money.
This is the, this is the reason why, you know, we, we try to keep it so we can keep doing it. But, okay, we do what we have to do.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Go forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rhinebeck Chamber Sidewalk Sale.
I have to put that one on.
I have it.
I got it.
It is.
I got it, yep. This is Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, advocate named Kirsten Bonanza, name of event is bizarre, bizarre, bizarre sidewalk sale. A sidewalk sale with events around the village, mostly indoors, but there will be busters at events, and the date is, it says, event date's May.
May.
It's all, it's a month of May?
She put...
Yeah, there was no date on there, it said May.
It came in when I was upstairs, so I didn't get to talk to her, she's going to be dropping off the...
It's normally just...
It's usually the weekend and then a rainy day.
Setup date is a day of, setup time is a day of, event time is 7:00 PM, estimated tear-down time, two hours, it's at village businesses.
It says your estimated peak attendance Saturday...
Oh, Saturday, 10:06, Sunday, 10:05, was that time?
Those are times, not, not dates.
Yeah. So, has our village, have we got approvals from...
This just came in.
So we, this is pending, then, and we need approval.
This is pending.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we keep this as pending, pending approval of our police, and, and we're charged to go through the normal process.
And limited to one, it's only one weekend, right?
One, they usually have one weekend with a rain date of the second weekend.
Right.
But if you're pending, and if it's the first weekend in May, you won't have a meeting unless you go address it now.
We can, limited to, I'm thinking of a weekend.
So we need dates, and that, our police.
You, you read something different than just, it sounded like more than just the normal sidewalk sale, sounds like some sort of events as well.
Except events, yes. But there's no ways associated with it, and no specifics, except for busters and indoor events, is what it said.
Busters?
Busters, like a...
Busters?
Like playing a guitar and, or a violin, you know...
Play guitar, it's on the piano.
Okay.
Alright, so it's pending approval from police and date.
And dates, yes. Now we have another application from the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce in the Douglas County Fairgrounds, submitted by Kirsten Bonanza. This is for a car parade, a short parade of antique and sport vehicles during the car show and, at the fairgrounds. The event dates on this one are May 4th and the 5th, setup time is 11:00, event time is 11:30, estimated tear-down time, basically one minute. Location of the event is on Market Street. So essentially, when Kirsten talked to me about this, this one, she said, they just want the cars to drive down Market Street and make a loop and go back. So, but it is a kind of a parade that will be organized at the fairgrounds, they'll come down Mulberry, go down Market Street, and just obey all traffic signs and traffic regulations, and then move on.
So they're not going to require any kind of, you know, police to basically let them through, to let live anything like that?
Have the police looked at this one?
Again, this came in, at like 3:30 today, so he has not seen it.
This one has to be, pending police approval.
They also checked a box for street closing, and...
Yeah, but I don't, you know, it says 5 to 15, oh, you're right, 5 to 15 minutes at Mulberry.
At Market, because then, now we're back on the state, 4th and Market Street again.
It's going...
Thousand people.
See the map? Start and finish at... It's going, see the map? Start and finish at the fairground down Mulberry, down Center Street, and then, and then back to...
Police question mark.
So it doesn't go through the red light?
Yeah.
It does, it does put a question mark, it says police question mark.
She probably would want, she's thinking for all the cars to come out of Mulberry, so they have the police stop so that they let all the cars out on Mulberry.
All right, so we need police approval.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one would be, re-arranged, it's pending.
I don't think Pete has even seen, I know he has.
Okay, all right. So no, no, we'll notch on that, moving on. The Dutchess County, am I great grant update? I want to give everybody an update, because at our last workshop, we solicited ideas for the twenty nineteen county grant application, and we talked about submitting a, for an ambulance. Prior to submission, I went to work with the county to verify that the application for an ambulance would be acceptable, and it does not meet the criteria for this grant application. End of discussion, right? So therefore, that idea is out. One of the things that we've always talked about, though, so to carry on the conversation and not let an opportunity go by, there's an ADA component within the grant that allows, well, it's an ADA, free ADA improvements, and there's a list of ADA improvements you can make. Some of those reference to lights at crosswalks, cutting curbs at crosswalks, removing barriers for handicapped people at sidewalks and our crosswalks. So I said, maybe here's an opportunity for us, especially for our sidewalks that are on Market Street here by CBS and Brett alone, and the other one over at Terrapin, right, to improve those crosswalks, make them ADA, more ADA, or better ADA compliant. They already are cut, so there's no barrier to get to them, the sidewalks are cut down, because that was done. So what I've asked the county for is, would it be acceptable to put a flashing lights and an audible, and an audible signal for people who are hearing, who are sight impaired, right, to be able to do this and still cross? All right. So that part is still being reviewed to see if it is acceptable, unless the board has something other that they would like to try to do. I've been trying to work with the transportation at the county to see what is acceptable for an ADA crosswalk, to maybe improve those two crosswalk locations. If you remember when we, Paul, you weren't here, but we submitted an application for to do ADA crosswalk, and put in a crosswalk on Market and Parsonage Street. And there was an ADA component crosswalking, and you're making, cutting the curves, doing all that kind of stuff, and putting in audible visual aids for crosswalks. So I'm trying to see if that's gonna be acceptable and approved by the county. We had a price, delivered price for assignment each side, and we did that one of thirteen thousand dollars, right? So this would be two times thirteen thousand, which is twenty-six thousand dollars to go forward with the county to be able to do this. I don't have the answer, unless the board has any objection or whatever. I will continue to work this to see if it's approval or if they have a better suggestion.
You have an ADA acceptable village hall entrance, was that, Gary, a thought of widening the doors?
So, no.
Because that, the application ultimately links to sections of the ADA Title III regulations.
So, that one doesn't comply because it doesn't remove any, the quote for the new, for this law, and Pat and I spoke about this, it doesn't remove any barriers. Currently, we have no barriers that stop anybody from getting access in the village hall. We have a ramp coming up, the ramp needs to be repaired, and so what we were thinking about is, well, maybe we can do the repair work underneath this, right, because that sidewalk has shiftly pulled the tank. Doesn't pass, because we're not removing a barrier that's an existent for an existing ADA compliant situation. So that one was not acceptable as well. Tried, but they said no. I'm trying to get something for us, that's what I'm trying to work for, approve our...
The, there's one high part that the ADA crosswalk thing, and it just, I think it's an ADA thing, it blinks all the time.
The flash, so...
It flashes all the time.
The flashing light is not an approved removal of a barrier.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it, but if you add the audible notification, right, we're thinking, and trying to work with the county, that that does remove a barrier for those people who don't know when it's okay to cross, right, because now there's an audible signal that allows them. So that's the combination of the lights and the audible.
But we're not gonna have a light blinking all the time, right?
No, you push a button.
You push, okay.
You push a button.
I don't know if the board saw the addition, but you know, when we talk about barriers, it isn't just large physical reconstruction of doors or widening, you know, they include things as simple as repositioning shelves, repositioning paper towel dispensers in the bathroom, removing high-density carpeting. So a lot of things meet that definition of removing a barrier.
Right.
We don't have to just necessarily think of something large yet, we can think of...
I'm, I'm just trying alternatives here. The board wants to try something else, I encourage you to go.
I thought this was really time-sensitive, too.
It is, and it's very time-sensitive.
It's a matter of weeks.
Yeah, so we have the May third, this one, we at least know the cost, if the county would allow this, it'd be kind of a very, a simple application to write, because we know the cost, but it's not worth writing.
Those four sections have to be completed.
Yeah, it's not, it's not worth writing if the county says, backs. So, my goal was to work it through the county first, county says no, and I, I'm out of ideas.
I mean, I definitely can think of crosswalks, and they need to be tear, or ramps, you know, places that would refuse cuts, I don't think it would qualify to be great enough. I mean, there are definitely spots all around the village, but if you want to add a crosswalk, yeah.
But that's not removing a barrier for something there.
Right. I mean, I swear, we're in a terrible state of disrepair.
Yeah.
So you said the lights at the two crosswalks, the one by CBS and the one by...
And one at Terrapin.
Terrapin, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So we also, we haven't heard yet about our request for the federal study, have we?
No.
No? Been there?
No.
Okay, so any objection, I'm gonna continue to...
No, no, they didn't put in audible signals at the center of town.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
They did, state did that.
State did that.
If you push the button now, it'll tell you, wait, you hear, wait, so...
And I think, and there's two sets of lights, there's lights for the pedestrians and lights for motorists. Those are, so the ones you think are flashing, they're the pedestrian ones or the motorists?
There's an indicator for the motorists to slow down.
Right.
But it's not just one of pedestrians around it, it's all the time. In other words, like, here's a crosswalk coming, you know, close to every...
Anyway, I'm gonna continue to work, okay? See, if we strike out, we strike out, but at least I'm gonna try. Okay, minutes approval, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from three twelve twenty nineteen and four two twenty nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let's see if I can find it. It was just, it was just something that Pat needed to be repaginated, just wanted to print it up, sorry, sorry. Two things, actually, on page number ten...
Which one are you talking about, Paul? John?
The March twenty-first, March...
March twelve.
March twelve, yeah. On page number ten. There are these, in the section on committee reports, specifically the autism committee support, supportive committee, there just seems to be, under vision and mission, there's the, what looks like an asterisk. It just seems like there's three asterisks that suggest there must be something put in order at the bottom, but there isn't. I think it's just a, you know, just a typo.
Okay, page ten.
Uh, page ten, right.
I can feel so.
Yeah. And then Pat, on page number eleven, same, same, it says minutes. There's, in the grant committee, there's a whole paragraph where the mayor is talking about STR, but it's merged into the grant committee.
Yeah, that's the grant committee.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be, that's it. Okay, this is just pagination of this out.
Those are easy answers.
On the twelve? What? Okay. On page ten?
Yeah.
Page ten, page eleven? Do you have, you see those little asterisks?
Oh, over there, I see, and special names.
Yeah.
Okay, there's three of them, yeah.
Just, just, right.
There's one of both under mission.
Right.
And their families, there's one more.
Just very, very...
I'll amend the motion to approve the minutes for three, March twelfth and April second with the noted changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Will carry. Pat, would you like to read at least the titles of all the correspondences, please?
Good much to the re-arranging, the re-arranging minutes?
Yeah.
That's the first, I'm sorry.
Four two.
What, I thought it was three twelve?
Three two twelve.
Oh, oh, one, okay, one go, okay, sorry, sorry, it's looking down there.
You're not feeling well, are you?
I'm not feeling well, no.
All right.
A little feverish.
They're going to be in the order that they're in the folder, not that's on your list, I'm sorry. There's a email from the director of JewishDuchess.org, it's an invite, and sharing upcoming events for May and June of two thousand and nineteen, in, not just in Rhinebeck, but in Rhinebeck and throughout Dutchess County. Is that, is that how you'd like me to do it? Is that, okay? The title was, okay. A letter from Parkinson's Disease Support Group, and it's thanking the village for the continued support needed, it means the world to them. Dutchess County Agricultural Society, this was their original letter regarding Mulberry Street and Platte, and we had the new one that we had addressed. The town of Rhinebeck, and it was a letter to the village informing that the village is working with Mayor's college professor, who's teaching this, of course, this program that focuses on the landsman kill and its watershed. A letter from, an email from Frank Castella Junior, and he, once again, the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce appreciates the support from the village of Rhinebeck and opportunity to be back in Dutchess County Fairgrounds for the twenty eighth annual Hudson Valley Hot Air Balloon Festival. And I probably should have had this in the other, in special request, but he didn't fill out that form. They, with respect to, it says, in further discussions with Dutchess County Sheriff's Department with respective traffic flow and safety of the community, we would like to request the closure of Mulberry Street between Platte and Route nine with limited vehicular traffic accessible, accessibility for balloonists, volunteers, and vendor duty.
So that one was given to the fairgrounds, for them to work with Dutchess, with the...
It was copied to them.
Yeah, so we, we don't have anything to rule.
Okay, okay, all right.
What was the closure area, though?
To request the closure of Mulberry Street between Platte Avenue and Route nine with limited vehicular traffic accessibility for balloonists, volunteers.
Mulberry between Platte and Route nine?
That's, yeah, that's...
Through the fair?
It's through the fairgrounds, behind the grandstands, all, you know, Mulberry starts at Platte.
Oh, yeah, Mulberry winding to Route nine.
Yeah, so we don't own, past defense, that fairground owns that, we don't know. As you know, we don't have any...
So we just close, approve the closure for two events and not this, so they have to resubmit, basically?
I want to correct you, we did not close the road.
I mean, we approved their closure, yeah. Whatever, it was a restriction.
I don't want anybody to assume that we're closing that road.
Another from the state of New York Executive Chamber, thank you for your letter regarding AIM funding levels for the year twenty twenty executive budget proposal. And, Matthew Sutton, regarding the Rhinebeck water system update for Platte Avenue, and a couple of weeks ago, me and my neighbors received an email updating us on getting our water lines updated, and he just continues to ask how the state costs on consolidating present and future water, wastewater installations. Dutchess County Community Action, and it's a financial support letter, asking the village for support. In the past, we support them, we don't do a financial support, we do a support in kind. Central Hudson, Central Hudson Energy Central newsletter, Central Hudson Net Metered Annual Reconciliation, and they have a proposed change regarding the annual reconciliation process for net metered accounts. Comp Alliance, we are pleased to inform you that twenty nineteen marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of the New York State Municipal Workers Compensation Alliance, Comp Alliance, and they gave us an appreciation, a new steel cabinet holding a first aid kit, which is in my office. Arbor Day Foundation, thank you for your continued commitment to and involvement in the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA, and it goes on about Tree City and how to time for trees, and their goal is to plant a hundred million trees and engage five million tree planters by twenty twenty-two. Rhinebeck Community Scholarship Fund, and it is a request for, it's a request for donation, but it's also to make us aware of what the community foundation does for the students of Rhinebeck. On the advice of Ryan Doughton, the zoning and building administrator, it's a letter of interest from Christopher Tavernier to be on the zoning board of appeals. New York NYSERDA, and it's exciting time for New York State to look, take a fresh look at energy, and it has, we look forward to working with you, and it has our contact information of at Cornell Cooperative Extension Sullivan County and for Dutchess County. That's NYSERDA. Mark Foundation, and it is from the Mark Foundation Board of Directors, and the Mark Foundation's dedicated to raising the necessary funds for our organization, our community, that provide programs and services associated with recovery and prevention, and they're having heavyweight boxing champion contender Jared Cooney, and that's the Mark out addiction, and that's all I've got.
Any comments on the correspondence?
That's a, Maris was talking about the dam, the first Salt Lake Dam, the Maris Study.
Yes.
About five years ago, we had to do a, we had two different studies we had to do. One year, we had to study the fitness of the dam, and then the other year, we had to do an evacuation plan. So I wondered if they were aware that...
They do, but they're not studying the dam.
Okay.
They are studying stormwater runoff, I mentioned this a couple times, but they're, they're studying stormwater runoff into the landsman kill and its effect on the rise of the landsman kill, you know, for flooding. They are looking at the valves at the end of the dam just to see what the outflow capacity is.
And we redid those.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're measuring the volume, right? So, their goal is to class, it's a class project, their goal is to give us some sort of predictability on when there would be a possibly flooding on the landsman kill based to, on stormwater runoff. As, I mentioned a couple months ago, the only predictability we have right now is to drive by and look at the height of the mark on the side of the wall over by the dam, or to go to specific locations to see how far the landsman kill is up, but that's usually either after the fact, or, you know, when the landsman kill is already high, or you don't know what's coming in the next two hours. So, we're trying to...
We crash the level and then in anticipation of a heavy storm.
So right now, they're trying to give us some predictability and say, there's, if there's a one-inch storm and your water level at the dam is X, lower it by Y, or if there's a two-inch storm, lower it by Y plus whatever, and that's the environmental science class at Maris is studying this to give us that information.
Did they do soil conditions? Do you know how, how in-depth it is? Like if the ground is frozen versus...
Yes, they're, yeah, they're studying stormwater runoff.
In all, all conditions?
Coming down from, not only just in the village, but in the village and the landsman kill all the way up through the town. kill all the way up to the town. So they have written letters to all the property owners along the landsman kill for accessibility to study the topographical area of the, of the landsman kill.
Better than the indicator push behind that highway department, that's like a PhD.
Better than the plate that's behind the white... Yes. So hopefully by May, we'll have some industry report, but it's not just, they're not doing anything to the...
Yeah, I know, PhD.
...busness of the dam. They would like to see if we could augment and have some better control over opening the valves versus climbing down over the bank in the middle of a storm and unlocking the chain and manually turning that valve, right, and guessing about how far it's open and what the, and what the perceived runoff is. So that's why they're measuring the valve flow, which we put in. Yeah, they're not flood control, let's be honest. There's no flood control there. These valves are put in for draining the lake and lowering the lake. They're not what you would call flood control valves. We use them that way, but they are not in a predictive way that...
So are we bound to keep the lake at a certain level?
Nope. It's been dropped several feet at times. Yeah. And we're coming into a season now when, when most flooding occurs along the landsman kill.
There's a lot of evaporation in the summer, it's not bad, but this time of year is...
It's really bad. So I'm anxious to see what their report is.
Yeah, cool.
It's not costing us a dime, and we've been working, they're working closely with our DPW, John Fenton, and our highway department, who's been working with them to show them different points of access as well.
Very good.
In fact, the whole class was here last week and did a walk around, around the dam and the lake to start getting their feet wet, so to speak. No fun.
I assume the dam is secure.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Personnel, I'd like to note, you know, recognize our police officer, Daniel Alberg. It happens, actually, today is his 28th anniversary. It says 4:10. I didn't take it wrong. I had on my calendar today, 4:09. But, I'm sorry, you have 4:10. I apologize, 4:10 for Dan Alberg, 28-year anniversary with our police department. Thank you, Dan, for being a valuable member of our police department. Executive session, I have nothing going once, going twice, moving on. I make a motion to close the meeting at 9:36. Second. Any discussion?
Yeah. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.